Hi Wendy.
Hello.
Hey Ruben.
How's it going?
Good, you?
Yeah, not too bad.
Hi.
So we're hanging out still waiting for quorum. David and Caitlin won't be with us tonight, so once we get one more board member, hopefully it's Becky, we can open the meeting.
Alright.
You guys want to wait till about quarter of, or do you want to try to just cherry pick anything that we could possibly discuss? What do you think?
We can give a few more minutes.
Okay.
Does somebody know how to reach Becky?
I only do via email. I don't think I have.
Oh right, I didn't know if you had her number.
Or Joe.
I think I actually have her number, let me look. I do, I can send a text real quick and see.
Thanks, Joe. I don't think I have everybody's phone numbers, actually.
If you want mine, I'm happy to give it to you. You may have, anyway. You want it? This is Rosemary.
Yeah, do you want to say it out loud, or you just want email?
Oh sure, I don't, I have no problem, no, that's no problem. Eight zero two two four nine two four four six.
Four six, alright.
Mine too, this is Wendy, once you're ready.
I'm ready.
It's eight oh two, two two four six two nine four.
Nine four. Joe, Wendy, Rosemary.
Did you already have mine?
No, I do not have yours, actually. I don't have anybody's.
Oh wow. They can have mine too, let me know when you're ready, when you catch up.
I am, I'm ready.
So eight oh two, of course.
Yep.
Eight, eight, three, nine nine five zero five.
Nine five zero five, okay, great.
And I did send a message to Becky, I haven't seen her response yet, but we'll see.
Okay. I know she travels, and not everybody responds, like, like some of you do, that you've received the packet, so we'll just go from there.
What is it that we could talk about that doesn't require quorum? How's it, you want to talk about staffing, or?
Didn't know if we could have Nikki and Ruben talk about some of the things that are coming up, because they, I don't think we need to vote on any of thing. It's about the planning grant that I, that they were here and told us about last month, and getting ready for the charrette and things like that. We just, I would rather have everybody here to do a letter, a letter to regarding Encore's support of the project, and we can't do many meeting minutes, so.
Yeah, as far as the minutes go, I'm taking notes either way, but I assume it just means we wouldn't, they just won't be published. I could still share them with like David and Becky, whoever else isn't here, just so they can catch up, right?
Right, right. If we end up having any discussion, yes. And, and they, those can be recorded, actually, we just don't show any, any action.
Gotcha, okay.
Remember our alternative meeting date is the fourth Thursday of the month, but that's actually Thanksgiving this month.
Yeah, I don't think any of this will be at the meeting.
No.
Looks like Becky just.
Hey Becky, welcome.
Hi, sorry I'm late.
No worries, glad you could join us. So, David is not with us tonight, so you as vice chair get to run the meeting.
Oh goodness, okay. Great.
Yeah.
Do I need to call us to order? Have you been waiting for me to get started?
We have been waiting for you.
Oh, okay, well, welcome, let's call ourselves to order, and very appreciate your patience. I just did not leave the office enough time to get home to my computer. Um, do we have any adjustments to our agenda?
I have not.
Not seeing any, okay. Do we have any public comment for anything that's not on the agenda?
There's no one in the room here with me.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our October 10th meeting.
Motion to approve, this is Wendy.
Thanks Wendy, do we have a second?
Well, second, Rosemary.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye, or raise your hand. Janet, are you raising your hand to point an order?
I can't vote, I just wanted to ensure that the chit and den can be, the spelling can get corrected when Joe has a chance. On the first page, third line of old business.
Yeah, I'll make, yeah, I'll make a note of that and I'll submit a revision.
Thank you very much.
So I assume we should make sure the motion and second are okay with that?
I'm fine with the amendment, Rosemary, I second it.
Great. Do we need to, do we need to vote again, or was that enough of a vote? Okay, great. Okay. Um, then we're on to old business, and the first item was discussion and possible action on the presentation we had last month from Encore Renewable Energy on their battery storage. And I don't actually know what that possible action is, Janet.
Yeah, it was, I, it was to write a, a letter in support of the project, I'm pretty sure that's what we heard from Mr. Carlson when he was here.
Yeah, he suggested that was a possibility, that we could do it if we wanted to, we don't have to. And I think we were going to discuss if we wanted to or not.
Sure.
So the suggestion is that we consider writing a letter in support of the project, and the letter would go to the Public Service Commission, is that?
I think it would, it would go to, who's Sam with? Not I love, Encore, which would be shared with a Public Service Board.
Got it. Janet, is this something the commission has done in the past?
We've written very few letters of support, because those typically come from the council level, but there's nothing wrong with a commission submitting a letter of support, if, if you so choose.
Yeah, okay. Uh, what do other commissioners think?
I'm sympathetic to that, I think it's a good project, and I, I think we probably broadly agreed on that. I would be hesitant only because, I mean, we do have quorum, but we have the bare minimum of quorum, so I would be hesitant to go ahead with that, with such a small percentages of us here. But I do think it's a good idea, but other than that, I'm just a little hesitant.
Did they present at city council, I think they were going to after they presented to Planning Commission, do you, we know if they did that, Janet?
They have not, and they're not on next week, or next week's agenda, that's a special meeting by the council anyway. And I can look and see if they're on the 26th, but Nicholas hasn't asked me who they are and what it's about either, so I'm guessing, I'm guessing, no. So we may have more time if, if you'd like to potentially just postpone this idea.
Yeah, this is Rosemary, I, I would, I would rather wait for the council's reaction. I, I don't think we should do it before we know whether they're all on board, I don't know if everyone else agrees, but that's how I feel.
I agree with Rosemary, that's why I asked about the council, because I just think it's good to get, if letters generally come from the council for support of things, I think it might be good to, for them to hear, and like Joe said, you know, we barely have a quorum, so maybe it makes sense to wait.
Would you like me to reach out to Mr. Carlson and find out what his timeline is, so at least you folks have that? Okay.
Yeah, that would be helpful, yeah, thank you Janet.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, next item on our agenda is the downtown planning area grant, and I'm guessing that's why we have guests.
Yeah, hi.
Hello.
So, was it last month, was it a whole month ago? We, uh, we came in and introduced this project. So where we are currently, we've had a couple of conversations with Janet in the interim, and the contract is out for the consultant. So we don't have dates as yet for the charrette exercise, but that is still anticipated in January at some point. And so we are figuring out the best approach for outreach notice, however you want to call it, to residents, businesses, and property owners within the, the designated study area, which is the same as the designated downtown. Um, so, in terms of that, I will be pulling parcel ownership data from the state parcel base, which has 2023 grand list ownership data in it, so that will, that will need to be checked, I imagine there have been some transactions over the past, I guess it's a year and a half, I think it was April 2023 that that, that the ownership data dates to. And then we had discussed the the city website, and I think it was Facebook, I forget with the other, but some, some social media platform and email list outreach. And the, the question of businesses, making sure that we get full coverage on business owners, and, and, and full notification of them is, is an open question, as is a shortlist of potential venues. Both for the public exercise, and then the open studio space that the consultant team would, would be working out of while they're here. So with that said, if anybody has ideas, I mean, the, the two that immediately come to mind, I think for me, for the, for the public exercise, the public design exercise, the charrette itself, would be the auditorium or the old labor hall. In terms of, in terms of spaces that are large enough that if we get a, a strong showing, we could accommodate and are well-known, and I guess the, the question is, are there, are there others? Other locations that are worth considering for that, and then in terms of an open studio space, that's a smaller location, that's you know, maybe half.
Yeah, could we take your questions one by one? Like, talk about what you, what kind of, what your parameters are for the public meeting? What do you need for that?
So that would be a space with, you know, I, it, I, I don't know what a, what a realistic number is, but you're gonna want a large enough space to accommodate multiple groups working around tables, probably thinking like, you know, three by six, a lot of three by six folding tables. That can be set up for people to work around in small groups, to do some, some participatory design work in terms of, you know, so that's, that's generally going to be, you get an aerial map, and you look and you say, yeah, I think we should have more of this here, and some of this here, and, and then the end of that exercise is, you get all those, all those you know, all those small group outputs together, and collate and synthesize based off of that. And then, you know, so so this is why I'm thinking auditorium or labor hall for that, right, where you, you're, you're definitely going to have a large enough room to accommodate a healthy turnout for that exercise. And then for
So could we, do you, are, do you want our feedback on that question, or are you just sharing that information with us?
Yeah, so I'm, I, I mean, obviously I've, I've already, right, it's, it's you know, the, the auditorium or the labor hall are kind of obvious options to me, but I'm, I'm wondering if there are other spaces that people are aware of, that they think might be suitable for that exercise. Just because once we, once we have a date, then it becomes a, right, then we have to, we have to actually lock something in, so we want to have some options in case there are, there are already, you know, in case those locations are already in use.
I'm thinking right out of the bat, the second floor of Alumni Hall, which is the little brick portion of the auditorium. But that will be dependent on, you know, what else may or may not be scheduled, so the sooner we know. And that's a five day charrette exercise, or three days, or what are you and Nikki thinking it's supposed to be?
So the, the, um, public the public design exercise is a, that's a single, that's a single day, that's a, you know, that's couple hours, couple, couple, three hours maybe, tops. And then the, the other portion, the, the sort of bulk of the time that the, the consultant team would be here would be a smaller working space that is open for either like a drop-ins, and stakeholder meetings, you know, face-to-face meetings with, you know, stakeholders, business owners, property owners, to, to come and have some more, more targeted, in-depth conversations with you know, the people who are either involved in the policy end, or are potentially more affected by, by those types of planning efforts.
And that is the rest of the week, three days, four days, they're gonna be here a week, correct?
Let me.
I didn't know if you had access to that yet. So while he's looking that up, I'm thinking, obviously, Alumni Hall, because it wouldn't, we wouldn't have to pay any kind of rental fees. Downstreet Housing's kitchen meeting area could work, and that's a nice space, I'd have to find out if Angie would be willing to let us have the space, because that actually would be in the planning area. I don't know if, what was it, KeyBank is now the credit union, I don't know if they have a, a meeting space like Community National does. Community National Bank, next to the Allegion, I don't think their public meeting room is big enough. That's why I'm still leaning more towards the auditorium. I don't know if anyone else knows of, of space, say in our planning area, that, you know, people could walk to?
No, and I think the labor hall, just because of the way that it room is set up, like if you get a bunch of people in there talking, it, it's hard to hear. So if, if we want people to actually be able to be engaged and participate, I I definitely think like Downstreet Kitchen or the auditorium second floor would be better places.
So Ruben, I think, I think it's Alumni Hall is our primary, and, and I'll see, once we have a set date, a set few days, see what Angie can do to help us out as a backup, or maybe even an alternative location for one of those days. They do have a lovely space that they share, so.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at the scope now, so it's a, it's a four-day exercise that they do. And so the first day is, is opening, it's their opening presentation, so that's you know, that's their, they're presenting on, you know, the purpose, purpose of the exercise, the, you know, how, you know, what, what they're asking, you know, how the, the, the method, the approach. And and some, their, their preliminary site analysis, basically, right, the, the, the preliminary desk exercise that they do. And then the second through fourth days would be when they would be having, having some kind of smaller space for that open studio. I don't think you need, I don't think you need a full-size room that can accommodate a full public meeting, but a space that could be functionally a, a temporary workshop space for them, I think is a good way to think about it. And then a space for closing presentation on the evening of the fourth day, that would be you know, them presenting their, their preliminary design based on the synthesis of the, the hands-on citizen input, and the, the topic meetings and design work that they do over the course of that open studio process.
So for the open studio process, this is in January that we're talking about?
Yes.
Um, the Berry Social Club, which is going to be a co-working space, and is in the design area, might be willing to host that? And that's right on Main Street, they have, uh, like direct street access. They might, they might be a good spot for that. And they have, they will have meeting rooms and things like that.
What was the name again?
It's called the Berry Social Club.
Berry Social Club, okay.
Sorry, would that be for the final presentation, or for the, the smaller space studio work?
The stop, the smaller space studio work, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And I'm sorry, I'm not following, I'm hearing now three different places that you need, like which, is the beginning thing, the public meeting, or the end thing, the public meeting?
So, I think ideally you would, you would want ideally you would use the same space for both, but the, there's a, there is a closing presentation, so there's an opening presentation and workshop, which you want a large space for. Then there's the open studio, and then there's the closing presentation, which you probably also want a larger space for. I mean, and, and you know, I'm sure remote participation as well as that's gonna be, you won't, you won't necessarily need to have the Tables, because you won't be be having a physical exercise for that. Um but I think that you would want a larger space than than um. Than the studio space, if you do have people wanting to attend in person.
It it might make sense to have your opening presentation and closing presentation at the same place. And then your smaller studio environment at the Social Club or Alumni Hall, I think was the other one, so. Um or maybe everything's at the Alumni Hall, if it's available.
Yeah, I'm I'm thinking too, if you want any of this, so people can participate via Zoom. Especially towards the end of the exercise, like you could have um uh zoom. People being able to zoom at the beginning to at least listen to TPUDC. And then at the end to see what was the the outcome of the public exercise. Um the owl really struggles up in that room on the second floor. There's also the council chambers, um which probably can hold fifty people. Um so that's certainly another thing, I personally have not been in the Social Club, so I don't know the 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 breadth of their room yet. But I, I didn't.
Maybe for a public meeting, I was thinking of them for like the design studio.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing is, I was just sitting here wondering, you know, where Duck, Decadence was right next door, is empty right now. And I could ask Mark Nicholson if he wo- would be willing to let us have the space. Um, I don't know if he'd do it for free, but it's certainly worth an ask as well. Um I'm thinking, Ruben and Nikki, um with Becky's suggestions and everyone else thinking, I I think there's. Plenty of meeting space, we're just gonna have to really nail down something once we know the dates and the times. Okay, yeah, the Social Club's a great idea for that middle portion, for sure.
Yeah, no, and that's, and that's the thing is, I don't, we don't need to necessarily. Make a final decision, but it's, this is more a make sure that it's on people's radar and and that we're, we're. Thinking about it and that we know that it's, know that it's coming and and have some ideas of of where. Um these various, these various um activities can take place for this exercise.
So Janet, are you, are you on tap to help finalize those things, or is there, are there things that you need from the Planning Commission itself?
Um. I could certainly work with Ruben and Nikki to nail something down, if any of you think of another space. Besides the Social Club, besides Downstreet Housing, if you have that aha moment and go, well, what the church, this church has a great big. Room that we could utilize, I mean, send us your ideas for sure. Um but we'll keep, we'll percolate with what we've got, I guess.
Raylene, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I can definitely accommodate at least fifty in my studio space on Main Street and Berry. Easily, and um we do Zoom and all kinds of things out of there. Every day, all day, so we, that is also a potential. Um there's tables, chairs, everything that we would need, handicap accessible restroom. Uh so I'm willing to do that, and uh also maybe the Elks would allow us to do such a thing.
Right, the Elks, um that's great, thank you for offering up your space, Raylene.
You're welcome.
And and if Raylene's space can accommodate the the time that uh TPUDC needs it. We, like Ruben and Nikki have said, maybe we have everything right there for the entire time.
And and I'm more than willing to meet anybody so they can come check it out first, you know, see how it's laid out and. Don't go there, that's fine.
No, this, I mean, this is all, this is all good, and it's definitely, knowing that we have a lot of options to work with. Um so that we can, you know, definitely have have something. Um lined up once, once it's time to get that set, um is definitely good. And I think that the uh. The only other piece, um and this is something that I think I I mentioned. Uh that I'll be working to compile the the um ownership list. From the parcel base. That, once we have um. The. Uh. The targeted outreach list, right, so that'll be, you know, there's general outreach, which is. All Berry City residents, and then targeted outreach is gonna be landowners, business owners. And um any identifiable stakeholder organizations or agencies. And um, you know, I think the, the only thing I would say is that as a future ask. Um I I think we would like to pass that uh those those lists by the commission, just. To make sure that, again, that there isn't anything that we're, that we're missing on those, so. Those are not, those are not something that we have for you now, but uh as a future ask, um that is a request that I would make.
And is there a role that you're expecting the Planning Commission to play during this week?
Um, you know, I will, I will have a conversation with uh TPUDC once, once we start doing. The, you know, once we have something locked in and start doing some of the the um. Logistics and planning with them, the only potential ask I can imagine is that there may be. Um a request for some facilitation. From uh Planning Commission members to 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 act as um charrette facilitators for. Um the public design workshop, um but I I think. I can't imagine there there being much that that needs done beyond that.
Um in terms of like roles for outreach. Um I guess we need to identify who is doing that work. Um for Berry City, you know, the the emailing, the posting to social media and. Just getting the word out, you know, before Christmas, potentially to to just get. Folks interested in in knowing of the the charrette. So how how would, as the PC, would you like to designate those roles? Um to to, you know, to build this outreach in the community. So who's, I guess, who's doing the outreach, essentially? Um Janet, are, is it something that you're gonna lead, or? Or should the PC be more involved?
I would love to have everybody involved, um but realistically, it's probably gonna be me. With with folks' input, for sure.
Okay, and what can we do as a, you know, the RPC, how can we help you with that? Is.
I'm thinking, you know, if if someone can be designated the one who writes the social media posts. So then all I have to do is say, put it on the Berry City Facebook page, put it on Front Porch Forum. Um I will get a dedicated page. Set up under the Planning Commission with something on the scroll that will take people to that page. And we can use that and post whatever it is that we want to, to to, you know, um. To generate in uh interest, um. But other than that, um do we, the, here's a question, do you wanna put anything in the newspaper, um? Sometimes we put, a- as a staff person, we think of all these things and people still don't know about it. So as as a resident, as a, as a business owner, I mean, is there any place that we typically miss? That you guys know of? I don't know where else to to get it out there. Short of, you know, spending money, which the city doesn't really have at this point. And and having postcards mailed through the mailing center to Berry City residents or whatever.
Did you say you had an active Facebook page for Berry City? Or Front Porch Forum as well would be a really good one?
Yeah, Facebook is our official um social media posting site, not Front Porch Forum. Because obviously, it's instantaneous, um but we post regularly everybody's meetings and such to a Front Porch Forum.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, flyering, flyering may also be an option. Um and that's something, that's something that um I can. Worry about developing a flyer, once we have some dates.
Okay. I see Wendy, you've got your hand up, and then Raylene, I don't know if your hand is still up or if it's back up from before.
Um, I'm wondering if um, the new um messaging. Platform that Berry just, we put it out and used it, I I don't know if it's meant for. Just emergencies, and I think it's Regroup, that text messaging. Um, I was just looking up on the city site, but you could get updates, important information. I'm wondering if it's intended, it doesn't say it's for um emergencies, it says. Communicate important updates and news, so I'm wondering if that might be. Um.
Yeah.
Something, maybe Nicholas knows more about that, Janet, I don't know if you could check with him.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's not the vehicle we're gonna use, that's for, what Regroup's intent is, is to replace VT Alert. Specifically to Berry City.
Okay.
Yeah, so so that's not the place at this time. Maybe years down the road, Regroup is our rock star, maybe it will be, I don't know. Uh but Regroup is, if there's something else that you guys all regularly use that I don't, I would love to know about.
There's a couple Facebook groups, like Berry City Resident Chat, maybe that's something we could post it on.
Yeah, one of you could absolutely do that, then, you could, you know, copy and paste whatever it is that we put somewhere else, so.
Yeah, we could share it to those pages to get the word out.
Okay.
Raylene?
Uh, yes, so again, I have um the podcast, the podcast page, eight oh two scoop. And um the majority of the followers there are Berry City residents. So I would be happy to put anything out on that as well.
Very nice.
Great, yes, we can coordinate, um. I don't know, Ruben and Janet, do you think, like, mid-December is too early, depending on when the shred is? So it get, or do you think we should wait till after Christmas?
I, I would lean toward giving people earlier, earlier notice and then keeping it on their radar.
Okay.
Yeah, a long runway is a good idea.
Okay.
Such a busy time of the year, we need to, you know, keep the repetition out there.
Yep. So we could, I mean, early December, but probably mid-December, and then, and like every two weeks. A reminder, and we could get a flyer out closer to the date. Um that could just go in, you know, libraries, in any um kind of. Uh billboards in Berry City, or tack boards?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a few left, not very many, but sure.
Okay.
I know, I know a handful of business owners that I, I mean, I'm sure you all know. People, some business owners, but I'm just thinking of a couple of people I know that I could probably. Convinced to to put something up in their establishments. So that's, that that would be, you know, and even if, even if there's not a cork board, maybe, maybe we can ask some people we know real nice and they'll. Be agreeable.
Yep, the library is another good place, we always post meeting agendas there as well, so.
Okay, then would the Berry Area Development seems like a way to reach businesses?
They are currently without an ED, so I don't know, um they have an interim ED. I don't know how much their website has changed since Amay has departed. Um. But maybe the partnership is the one to to utilize, Berry Partnership, Tracy Lewis. She can do email blasts because she communicates with all of the businesses in the downtown. Yeah, the partnership, absolutely.
That's, okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Partnership.
Who would like to reach out to Tracy Lewis, is that, is that something that we should do?
No, I can, Tr- Tracy will board with it.
Okay, great. Uh Ruben, is there anything else we should discuss?
No, I was gonna say, I think, I think that's everything that we had.
Yeah.
It sounds like we have. We have a list of spaces and uh a reasonable, a reasonable set of. Um avenues for outreach and and. A good, a good preliminary idea of what we're gonna do once we have some things more set. Um but just because of the timeline that we are working on, it it felt like it would be good to have. Things as pre-placed as possible, so that once, once we have those dates, we can. You know, we can start all of this moving, so I appreciate that.
What about stakeholders? You know, we've got a a good smattering of of folks that live here in the city. What is your intent and how are we gonna identify the stakeholders? And maybe we can, you know, I've told you, Capstone, Downstreet, you know, all of our organizations, maybe, maybe the. The Commission has some, some good ideas as well, do you wanna quickly speak to stakeholders, Ruben or Nikki, and? We can maybe do a quick download on that as well?
Yeah, I think Capstone, Downstreet, the. I wanna say Housing Coalition, but I feel like I'm gonna get the.
The Housing Task Force.
Okay.
That's a task force that was born out of the VCRD community visit several years ago.
Banks, all the the banks downtown. Um. Uh Ruben, you said you were going to be able to get a list of the ownership list from the parcels in the area?
Yeah, I mean, it's the, it will be, it's based on twenty twenty-three, the the data. We have has twenty twenty-three um grand list uh data in it, so there may have been some churn. In that uh in the interim, but we'll have at least a, at least a preliminary list that can be. Checked against any transaction records and and updated is is, that's a, that's a tomorrow morning GIS exercise for me.
Ruben, you can get that right off our tax map.
Oh, really?
I would tell you to go right to our tax map in the morning, there's a, what's called a lasso tool. Uh up above on the left, right, left toolbar, and it, you can draw a line about uh an area. And you can export a list in Adobe or Excel.
Oh, okay, that's great.
And uh my assessing clerk keeps our tax map up to date every time a property changes hands, it's not just once a month, so. That's real live, up-to-date time, so go ahead and use that.
Okay. Will do.
Yeah. Would this be also something to not make a big presentation or anything at City Council, but just like have it mentioned as something that's coming up? Um and maybe give like a. Three-minute uh summary at uh City Council, so that councilors know what's happening. And that's just like another way to reach engaged citizens in the community.
Yeah, I think that wouldn't be a bad idea at all.
When is the next meeting?
So the agenda's already been set for the nineteenth, and we're working on. The twenty-sixth agenda now. Um so write on the city's website, um and I can email it to you tomorrow if you want, but if you go to the city's website, go to the city council page. Um I believe it's on the right-hand side. Nicholas keeps an up-to-date list of when the council meets, because it's typically every, it's two Tuesdays a month. And so you can look ahead as to what's tentatively been scheduled for December as well.
Yeah, my my guess would be that probably we would wanna aim for um. The earlier December meeting, uh one. The earlier December meeting, uh, once we've had, um, once we've had a chance to confirm. Dates, uh, with the console.
Yes, yeah, so if they're having a meeting the twenty-sixth of November, I'm pretty sure they'll, they'll have a meeting on the tenth. They may or may not schedule something on the third, um, but, uh, we can absolutely firm that up as well.
I popped the link in the chat, that, the agenda, the schedule says the, the tenth and the seventeenth of December.
Thank you, Becky. Do you want anything else for, um, stakeholders, or you're pretty happy with that? We're gonna let that, um, solidify on its own besides the ones that you've listed? Thinking that maybe some of the business owners might become stakeholders?
Yeah, I would, I would anticipate, I would anticipate that, you know, I'm, I'm, when I say stakeholders, I mean. In addition to, I assume business owners, um, and because we have, um. Because we have the, the outreach potential through the Berry Partnership there. Um, this is kind of the, the, in addition to, in addition to property and, and business owners and residents. Um, you know, this is the, this is the, um, uh, other organizations that. Um, would have, would have a stake in this or, or, um, work in, in this area and this domain.
Okay, good.
All right. Are, are we all reasonably happy with what we've accomplished?
There's a lot of information tossed around.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. If you have any other stakeholders in mind, um, feel free to send them on to us. All right. I think that's it for Shuret Planning.
Yeah. We'll talk to you guys, talk, talk to you all again. Probably in December.
Yes.
Check back in.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
So that brings us to new business, uh, to review the transportation section of our municipal plan. I have to admit that I'm not prepared to facilitate a conversation about that. Um, but I'm happy if someone else wants to jump in and lead that part of the conversation.
That aside, I also think that's better to wait till we have everybody, because the, the whole point of this was to sort of discuss the. What was in the current plan with the whole, with everyone, it's not any critical business attached to it, so I think it's better to wait till we're all present.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's. Read the plan, here's an opportunity to do it piece by piece.
Yep.
Right. Okay, we could move right along to agenda item number eight then, uh, confirm that our next meeting date is December twelfth.
If everyone still has that date available, we don't have the lion's share of the group traveling or headed to Acapulco.
Works for me. I'm seeing some nodding heads, okay?
Works for me as well.
Thank you. Uh, then over to you, Janet, for staff updates.
Since I just put together my staff updates on Tuesday, I really don't have anything new to share since, you know, my brain dump. Unless people have questions for me, um, there is a lot going on in the city, like I said, there's the elevations, there's the buyouts. Um, there's this exercise, um, yeah, we're, we're all real busy and these are exciting times.
Great, thank you, Janet. Any questions on what was in our packet? Okay. That moves us into the roundtable. Anything else commissioners want to raise? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn, I think. Yeah.
I'll move.
Great. Wendy.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thanks for jumping in, Becky.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Evening, yeah.
Thanks, good night.
Bye.